Council will come to order. All rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, service members, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Going to go to Counselor Sika for another moment of silence.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take a moment of silence tonight for this evening. Over the past weekend, on Sunday morning, I woke up to some horrible news from my daughter. One of our former Linden students and a 2019 Malden High graduate, Amani Mala, was found dead in her hotel room in Belize on Saturday morning with two other, I think, 25 and 26, or 23 and 26-year-old girls from Riviera. I remember Amani bebopping around the halls of Linden and her father and her brother Abdul coming to all our school events over the years. She also still has a brother who her mother was pregnant with all those years ago when I was the president of the PTO, who is in the fourth grade at the Linden, so it is still currently a Linden family. And I just want to send my thoughts and prayers to the Mala family. It is a parent's worst nightmare for your child to think that they're going on vacation only to never return and have all these unanswered questions, you know, about... There's so many things circulating on social media over the past few days that I just want to make sure that the family knows that the city of Malden is sending them their thoughts and prayers during this most difficult time, so, thank you.
Please, a moment of silence. Thank you. I'm going to go to Counselor Linehan for our land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mr. President. We honor and acknowledge the Massachusetts, Pennecook, and Pawtucket peoples whose ancestral lands we now call home and on which we gather today. We express gratitude to the indigenous peoples who have cared for this land for generations, predating European colonization and continuing to the present. Moving forward, we are committed to ensuring that the histories, voices, and contributions of indigenous peoples are recognized and respected in the life of our city.
Thank you. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Here.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Linehan?
Here.
Counselor McDonald?
Here.
Counselor Sika?
Here.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor Spetafor?
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley?
Here. Under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that UMA, Urban Media Arts, will be recording this evening's meeting. First order of business.
Representatives from Friends of the Malden Public Library will appear before the council to present the annual calendar of events and to update the city on projects the organization is working on to support the library in realizing its mission to serve the community.
Please come forward. Thank you to the Friends of the Malden Public Library for coming before us today. Again, a sincere apology from myself and the entire council for the snafu, your first time coming. We are so happy to have you, so I'll hand it over to you.
Yes, good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me back. Just before I begin, how many of our council members are members of the Friends of the Malden Public Library? So I think the best resolution of making us wait last time would be a few more memberships before we leave today. So they're up here, I'll just leave them on the corner of the desk, thank you. Okay, so, all kidding aside, I'm very happy to be back here again for the second year. Last year was the first time that we presented, and a lot is going on at the Friends of the Malden Public Library. Okay. It doesn't move. Oh, there we go, it moved, it's delayed. Okay, so just a few Friends facts for those of you who were not here last year. Our mission is to support the Malden Public Library and its mission to serve our community by organizing fundraisers and participating in local events. The Friends promote books, reading, the library itself, culture, and diversity for all the citizens of Malden throughout all of our activities. So our two principles, I've been president now for over two years, and we set up our principles two years ago, just to kind of refresh things after COVID, it was important. So our two principles as they stand right now are to grow and develop the Friends organization to reflect the diversity in our community. Our organization has indeed developed in the last two years, we have been actively working on that principle. And to partner with Malden businesses and organizations for mutual support. By working towards these two principles, we strengthen our organization and ensure a membership that will guarantee the longevity of the Friends. So therefore, we're not only looking at what we're doing today, we're looking at what we'll be doing in the years to come. Okay, so diversity is on our agenda, and I am really excited to share this with you all. This was the implementation, this list, of our diversity plan last year. It was 2024 was our first year that we were actively on our calendar, reaching out and attending community events, not only to sell books for the library, obviously that's our excuse, but when we go to community events, it's a recruitment event. Because I can sit at the library all day long and tell people that we support diversity and we would like lots of diverse people to come join our organization, however, if we go out into the community and actually attend their activities and meet them and speak to them, it becomes that much more real. So 2024, and I've extended it onto the events that will be on our calendar again this year. We started off the year with the MLK event at the Emmanuel Baptist Church in January. We did it last year, did it again this year, and we just celebrated Black History with the Emmanuel Baptist Church this past weekend, so that's two years going. Lunar New Year, we did that one last year as well and redid it in January 2025. We will be participating in the Race Amity event, June 24-25, Juneteenth, Pride Coalition event, Hispanic Heritage Festival, Indigenous Peoples' Day with Malden Reads, our Halloween Book Treat, which has been going on since 2021, where we give out books to the children for Halloween. Last Halloween, we gave out 400 books to the community. And then we have our two major book sales, which are the Spring Book Sale that we partnered last year with the Malden Fire Department and our Fall Book Sale with the Malden Police Department last year, and we will be repeating them again this year. So these are just to show the logos of the groups that we are participating with. This list is growing, we are now at the point where we can actually say no to certain things because we don't have the bandwidth. But we have at least one event per month, and some events, we've got more than one event. Also, just kind of a parenthesis, as you may know, the Lunar New Year event and the MLK event were on the same day this year. Well, in my membership, I was able to get two groups of people to get the pop-ups ready for both events on the same day. So I had an MLK badge on this lapel and the Lunar New Year dragon on the other lapel for that day, so I think that's pretty amazing. We have a great group of people. So here, just, I know you guys like to see what it looks like when we get out into the community, so these are some pictures. This is from 2025, this was a month ago, the Lunar New Year celebration. You may notice, two of my members that are here with me tonight are in these pictures. We've got some great active members in the organization at the present time. Okay, Black History Month, which just happened. This was a joyous affair, May 2024, our Spring Book Sale. So we, Spring Book Sale is a two-day book sale, we have a Friday evening members only and Saturday open to the general public, which was the day we partnered for the first time with the Malden Fire Department. And firefighter Dave, who is back in the audience, discovered the Friends of the Library that day and signed up and has been an active member ever since. Always good to have a firefighter around. Okay, pop-ups from June, Race Amity, Juneteenth. And, as you all know, we revived our annual wine tasting gala last year. We kept it kind of small because we hadn't done it since COVID. We had about 125 people in attendance, it was a hugely successful affair, and we are planning the one for this year. So save the date, it will be on May 9th. And one thing that we are adding into the wine tasting is a mocktails table. We have become sensitive to the fact that many people do not like wine or don't drink alcohol, so we thought the incorporation of mocktails would be a great idea. These are some more pictures from last year. Our theme was Dress as Your Favorite Decade, so we had people dressed from the 1880s up until the 1980s, pretty much, and you can see some of the costumes and gear that people came dressed in. We also do other kind of random acts of kindness. Down in the bookroom, we had several copies of the Worcester Telegram from the years 1898, 1899, and 1900. Several volumes that were stacked up like this, huge leather-bound volumes. So, obviously, Malden has no use for these volumes, we contacted the Worcester Friends, and the person wearing glasses next to me in the photograph is the president of the Friends of the Worcester Public Library, and we gave them back to Worcester. So, that was pretty amazing, too. Pine Banks Fairy Houses Book Giveaway, Dora St. Martin, our director of the library, reads stories to the children. It's a fabulous event to see the children building their fairy houses, flitting around dressed as fairies, having a ball, and the Friends came up with, oh, probably about 100 books that were given away that day. September 2024, we partnered with GMAC, which is the Greater Malden Asian American... No. Thank you. Asian-Chinese-American, something like that. So, yes, so that was the first time that we partnered with them. In the picture is my new vice president, who is Huieng Guian, and Angela, who is also a chairperson for the bookroom staff. Fall Book Sale, pretty much the same idea as the Spring Book Sale, partnering with a different entity. So we partnered with the Malden Police Department, huge success. The one thing that was very different with the police was that they sent out people who spoke different languages. So we had an officer who spoke Haitian Creole, who was able to greet the children, the families in Haitian Creole, another officer that was able to speak Spanish, and the same thing. So fantastic, fantastic collaboration. We also reorganized the bookroom, which probably had not been done in about, oh, 20 years or so. We have a collection of about 50,000 books down there, and what we did was organize in the back corner a children's section, which you're seeing in the pictures. So things were freshly painted, the books are organized so the kids can get at them, everything is at their level, there's rugs on the floor, there's toys down there, it's just a happy place. October 2024, the Hispanic Heritage Festival, and that is me with the Spanish flag, Indigenous Peoples' Event as well. Our infamous Halloween Book Treat with the Chamber of Commerce, once again, it was 400 books that went this year. Okay. And then winding down to the end of 2024, the Winter Concert with Malden Historical Society, we partner with them every year. This year, it was held at the First Baptist, no, it's not the Baptist Church, the Baptist Church right next to the library, I'm not coming up with the name. So we had the Coral Arts Society from the high school, fabulous event. And then finishing up with the Winter Wonderland Book Giveaway with Malden Reads at the Winter Festival here at City Hall. And voila, second time in a row, this is our Friends of the Malden Public Library 2025 calendar. Subject to changes, things happen, I will send you all a copy of this. As you can see, our meetings are on that every month, and then from, starting with Lunar New Year, Martin Luther King, ending up with our Winter Holiday Book Sale, everything is pretty much on the calendar. Where there are question marks, we do not have the dates yet, but everything that's on the calendar is confirmed with our partners that we will be attending these events with our book sale card. Any questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation. Do we have any questions from the dais or any comments? Counselor Cologne Hayes?
I just want to say, I don't have any questions. I want to say thank you, and thank you all for coming out also to support Mary Ellen, and a lot of those events that you showed, we had participated in as well, so I just want to thank you for your enthusiasm. Every time you're there, the group is fun, people want to go over there, and you do a great job, and thank you for working on diversity, it matters, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor. Oh, if, from the chair, I would just want to thank you all again for coming. As council president, I am a, one of the permanent members of the Board of Trustees. I am one of the positions that represents the city of Malden, along with the mayor, and I just wanted to share that one of my primary goals as a member of the Board of Trustees is to really advocate for building maintenance in the facilities, particularly around the cleanliness, so I would love to get your support when it comes to this. We're looking at whether or not we can get volunteers to help pick up the slack and fill in the gaps, so this is something that's really important to me because I do think that it's a beautiful building, it is historic, we have many members of our community, children, and it's kind of like a safety net building, so making sure that the facilities are, you know, to the tip-top shape is something that really I care a lot about, so hopefully...
Greatly appreciated.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we're going to be going on to public comment. Do we have public comment? We have no, do we have anything, nothing written either? So we have no public comment tonight. This evening's, we have a consent agenda, so this evening's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes to be approved, three appointments to be referred to the Personnel Committee, five appointments that can be confirmed, 12 petitions to be referred to license, and one communication to be placed on file. Does any counselor have a desire to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? I see Counselor Linehan, you're alive.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was hoping to just remove the reappointment of Amanda Bellis from the Disability Commission. Amanda is fantastic, but she's also my direct report at work, and I would prefer not to vote on the appointment.
Understood. So that's going to be removed so that Counselor Linehan can recuse herself related to that particular item. Any other counselors? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus that one removal? On Counselor Simonelli, seconded by Counselor McDonald. I believe the clerk will call the roll, I think we're all here in person. Oh, I mean, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No, okay, because there's appointments.
Mayororal appointments.
Yeah, because we have some appointments, so we do have to do a roll.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Linehan?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Sika?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli? Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley?
Yes.
Okay, so all of the consent agenda except for Paper 97.
On Counselor Linehan's motion to recuse herself from discussion of Paper 9625.
97.25. Oh, I'm sorry, I have the wrong one.
9625. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Counselor Linehan is recused. And the minutes will reflect that she left the meeting at 7:28. So on Counselor Crowe's motion to approve Amanda Bellis's appointment to the Disability Commission, seconded by Counselor Winslow, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Linehan? Sorry, she's recused, we just went through that. McDonald?
Yes.
Sika?
Yes.
Simonelli?
Taylor?
Yes.
Winslow?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes. That passes unanimously, and then the consent agenda also passed unanimously. Next order of business. We have some communications.
Paper 112-25, Communication. During the meeting of February 11th, 2025, the council unanimously voted to enter into executive session with legal counsel for the city in accordance with Exemption 3 Massachusetts' General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding the matter of benevolent botanicals in 926 Eastern Avenue v. the city of Malden. During the course of that meeting, the draft minutes from the executive session of February 4th were unanimously approved by the body. Additionally, a periodic review of those executive session minutes regarding benevolent botanicals and 926 Eastern Avenue v. the city of Malden from the dates listed herein was conducted to determine if release of records is appropriate at this time. October 25th, 2022, September 12th, 2023, September 26th, 2023, February 4th, 2025. A motion was made by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Spetafor, to retain said meeting minutes and continued disclosure. The motion was approved by the following roll call vote: yea, Cologne Hayes, Condon, Crowe, Linehan, McDonald, Simonelli, Spetafor, Taylor, Winslow, O'Malley; nay, zero, absent, Sika.
Is there a motion to receive this communication? Counselor Winslow has a question.
I just have a question, because I just, the phrasing here of to retain said meeting minutes and continued disclosure, is it should be continued non-disclosure, is that phrasing correct?
We're disclosing the minutes, we're not releasing the minutes.
I just...
I'm not sure.
There's another type of... Okay, so it's just a type, yeah, all right, just to be clear, sorry.
Amendment.
All right, thank you, great.
So, yeah, so just so everyone knows, the word disclosure is going to be non-disclosure. Is there a motion to receive this communication and place it on file?
Do we have to amend it or is it just...
Is there unanimous consent that we're going to change it to non-disclosure?
The intent of the vote was to keep them, yeah, okay.
Yeah, because this is just reflecting what we did. No, I completely understand. So on Counselor Winslow's motion to receive and place this communication on file, seconded by Counselor Simonelli, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the communication is placed on file. Next order of business. Oh, actually, before, before we go on, I just want to, just to explain what that was. So we met in executive session, as was mentioned, related to a litigation. In that executive session, as is our practice, we have meeting minutes from past meetings about that particular topic, and we took the opportunity to review these executive session meeting records. Because it has to do with active litigation, we decided to retain the privilege and the non-disclosure. And then one of the reasons why this is on the agenda today is that the open meeting law requires that when we decide to retain something that has been requested, you put it on the next agenda, letting the public know that we've made this decision. I also just really also want to thank our direct reports here, we have the Solicitors' Department, our Clerk of Committees, and the City Treasurer. It is appreciated that you all are in attendance tonight, and with that, we will go on to our next order of business, which is enrolled ordinances.
Paper 356-24, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden is hereby amended by adding Title 12, Chapter Point 12, Section 500, site plan review educational, religious, and/or childcare facility uses.
So again, this is an enrolled ordinance, is there a motion to ordain?
Motion to ordain.
On Counselor Winslow's motion to ordain, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Condon?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Linehan?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Sika?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli? Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley?
Yes.
That is 10 to 0.
It passed 10 to 0. Next order of business.
Thank you. Paper 47-25, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden, Title 9, Chapter 24, Section 010A, Regulation of Lead Pipes in Residential Housing, is hereby amended as follows. After the word "sale," inserting the following: of addition of an accessory dwelling unit or...
Motion to ordain.
On Counselor Winslow's motion to ordain, seconded by Counselor Simonelli, the clerk will...
All in favor.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance is ordained unanimously. Next order of business.
Paper 113-25, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on Rules and Ordinance, to whom was referred Paper 389 and 402, series of 2024, having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends Paper 389 out favorably as amended and Paper 402 out favorably with no amendments. Both recommendations were by unanimous vote of the committee.
On Counselor Winslow's motion to receive the committee report, seconded by Counselor Linehan, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The committee report is received. Counsel, oh, the clerk will read the first paper.
Paper 389-24, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden, Title 12, is hereby amended as follows.
Counselor Winslow for the committee.
All right, just so people know what the paper is, the paper was set to create a new zoning use category for automobile services. This was inspired by the fact that car washes are not properly defined in our, the Malden Code of Ordinances and in their zoning, so it was something that made them sort of default to retail service, which, given this unique and substantial sometimes impact of these on the neighboring area, it made sense to define this. So, so we, there was a joint Rules and Ordinances and Planning Board meeting on this, and the Planning Board made a few recommendations. Was, one was to, in areas where these would be allowed, which would be like highway business and industrial zones, to recommend that we would keep them, they would be allowed by right by yes, that was a recommendation, and then to also make sure that there's an exclusive lineup area of nine feet by 180 feet. The committee reviewed those recommendations, the rules and ordinances, and we did not accept the first recommendation related to making the use of car washes by right in the districts, so that would remain to be special permit. And the thinking there was that because these can be very impactful based on the neighborhood setting, it was important to still have the special permit process to allow closer neighborhood review, you know, and, but we did support the Planning Board's recommendation of having the queuing area because that, often there's a, you know, we already noticed on Broadway that sometimes the queuing can back up onto the street, so it's important to make sure that is in there. So, so that on Paper 389... So, so that on paper, Three Eighty-nine, twenty-four.
So you're going to do the first part, and then maybe we'll take up the second one?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we will take up the first part. So that, the committee recommends that the paper be adopted favorably, and we adopt the second Planning Board recommendation, not the first. So that was the recommendation from the committee. Thank you.
Is there a motion to enroll?
So I guess, we do have to make a motion to amend.
Oh, yeah.
To include, so the motion to amend would be to amend section.
So on Counselor Winslow's motion, you can make the motion now.
So, yeah, my motion to amend, so that section twelve point twenty, point O-one-O be, we add end exclusive lineup area of nine feet by a hundred and eighty feet. So I make that motion to add that language in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Condon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That has been amended.
So then I wouldn't make a motion to enroll that paper as amended?
On Counsel Winslow's motion to enroll, is there a second? Counsel, seconded by Counsel Condon, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Sika.
Yes.
Counsel Siminelli. Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes. That paper has been enrolled unanimously.
Okay, so then on the second paper?
Yeah, the clerk will read the next paper.
Paper Four O-two dash twenty-four, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the City of Malden, six point twelve point O-one-O hours of operation in general, is hereby amended by adding under Paragraph A, retail car wash, eight AM to six PM.
Counselors, oh, so Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, so this was sort of an associated paper, was actually something that had been initiated last year as well. This really related to, you know, the fact that, you know, we made the amendment in the zoning to define what a car wash is, and then this was to, you know, we have certain, for certain businesses, they have certain different hours. Without this, you know, businesses could go from seven in the morning to eleven at night, actually, I think it's six in the morning to eleven at night, so our general permits. So this is to create a special, you know, operation category. I mean, it's not, this still would allow someone operating a car wash to come to the council to ask for extended hours. So this should just be the normal operating hours would be from eight AM to six PM, and if the licensee wanted to vary that, they would have to come into the council. So, so that was voted with favorably without any amendment to be recommended to the council. So, so the committee report was to, for the, was recommended favorably. Thank you.
Understood. You don't have a motion or anything?
So, I, yeah, so that's, I would make a motion to enroll, but then if we have to, if people want to discuss.
So Counsel Winslow's motion to enroll, seconded by Counsel Siminelli, Counsel Sika.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just have a couple of quick questions, I wasn't at this meeting. Is, does this pertain to car washes that are already currently in operation? So the one on Broadway that's already open, it's going to now have to close at six? Or are they grandfathered in with the previous hours?
My understanding is, and again, I would defer to legal for the formal opinion, but my understanding is that it would apply to them. The Sunnies on Eastern Ave has a special permit that controls hours, but we also did mirror the hours at Sunny's, so it doesn't exactly apply. It applies, but like, we match them. If they would like to do extended hours, they would have to come for an extended hours permit, similar to how other businesses request.
Okay, and one other quick question.
And actually, it's a good point, because one of the challenges that we have faced as a city is that because they were allowed, be allowed to be built by right, when some of the ward counselors have asked for some common sense modifications to help improve some of the ways things are functioning, they've pretty much brushed us off and said, you know, we don't, we don't have to comply. And so if people are coming for extended hours, it allows the city to have a little bit of more negotiation with them to try to remedy some of the negative side effects that we've seen.
No, that's fine. I was just, I was just curious. I know that Sunny's is open from eight to six, so I know that doesn't affect them, but does, I didn't realize that they had a special permit. Did we find that out after we started talks on this?
We did.
Okay.
Michelle Romero, our city planner, told us that at our last ordinance.
So is the special permit for Sunny's, is that for their self-bays? Is that what the special permit is for? Does anybody know what the special permit for the? Well, so I'm just, I think, I'm fine with the car wash itself closing at six, but I don't want to limit the self-service bays to six PM, because there are some people that, you know, can't get to the car wash by six PM, and they use those self-service bays, you know, and during the summer months, it's light out till nine o'clock. I would hate to see somebody not be able to get their car washed after six PM, and that, that car wash has been there for so long, I don't want to see. I know that it's your ward counselor, Siminelli, but.
Counsel Siminelli.
Oh, but it's fine.
Okay.
The special permit is for their both bays, so they can operate after six.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. I just had a couple of questions, thanks.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. Counsel Crowe, oh, you're up. Okay. So we, so we have a motion to enroll, it's been seconded by Counsel Siminelli. Any further conversation? Nope. Seeing none, this is ours, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ordinance is enrolled.
Paper one fourteen dash twenty-five, committee report. The Standing Committee on Finance, to whom was referred Papers Sixty-eight through seventy-three and seventy-five, series of twenty twenty-five, having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends these papers out favorably to the full council.
On Counselor McDonald's motion to receive the committee report, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Siminelli. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The committee report is unanimously received.
Paper sixty-eight dash twenty-five, order that one million four hundred fifty thousand dollars is re-appropriated to pay cost of revitalization of Dever Park in the amount of four hundred fifty thousand dollars, in the Riverworks Park in the amount of one million dollars, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. In that to meet this appropriation, one million four hundred fifty thousand dollars shall be re-appropriated from a portion of the amount borrowed on August second, twenty twenty-three, under the loan order passed by the City Council on June eleventh, twenty nineteen, to pay cost of Roosevelt Park revitalization, which project is abandoned and no liability remains in accordance with MGL Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty.
Counselor McDonald for the committee.
Thank you, Counsel President. This is the first of a number of Community Preservation Commission recommended grants and authorizations. So for this one, we had a good amount of conversation in committee. We received a lot of feedback from the community about this initially, and then I think cleared up some of the frustration and confusion around that, and it did receive unanimous support to recommend adoption of this order. This is, we have this decision before us, because the original bond, which the CPC authorized to pay for the original project at Roosevelt Park, was rather specific. It had some restrictions on the rate, it had some restrictions on the, and on the usage, and all city bonds are tied to a specific product, or excuse me, project or function. So when this project got canceled, we started running up into the concern that the bond would not be able to be spent, it had already been borrowed. And if you borrow a bond and you don't actually spend it within two years, that is a problem. You start to get fees, it can infect your credit rating, and so on. So we needed to be able to redeploy these funds that were already borrowed for projects that were shovel-ready and could take, and could be paid within the next six months. Thankfully, we had two such excellent projects. One is the Phase Three of the Dever Park project, and the other is the Malden Riverworks project, which this would allow, both have been through the CPC before, and the Malden Riverworks authorization was outstanding from last year, they couldn't fund the full request, so this brings them up to the full request for that really excellent project. So that takes care of the one point four five million in the bond. Folks did want to make sure that this was not in any way pred, disadvantaging the project at, or any, I should say, disadvantaging any future project at Roosevelt Park, because right now there is not a project in the authorization pathway. So I think, to speak for my colleagues, everyone there hoped that we would get to a project in such, such a project for Roosevelt Park in the near future. Such a project would have to go back to the CPC for reauthorization, would have to go before us for authorization, just like any other project. And so I, speaking for myself, am really committed to doing what I can to help make that happen. I heard also a very strong commitment from the CPC that in future years, since they've been able to redeploy some of these funds to these key projects, they're very interested in prioritizing consideration for Roosevelt Park, which was one of the original projects that the CPC actually was able to fund. So I don't believe that this in any way holds back potential plans for Roosevelt Park in the future. I do think this is a fiscally prudent decision that allows us to make the best use of our resources, to fund excellent projects with broad support, and that helps ensure that we are being faithful to our, to our responsibility as a borrower. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Counsel McDonald. I see Counsel Condon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the city councils for their support. We're finally going to get that park leveled out with the irrigation, irrigation will be fixed also, but the park itself has a dip of about a foot and a half, and hopefully that will get, we'll get that squared away and have a nice regulation soccer field and a girl's softball diamond also. And I'd like to recognize Dan from the PCP Committee. Thank you for your consideration. And once again, you know, this park is very widely used. CPC. What did I say? There's no question about. There's no question about the park gets used. So thank you, everyone, for your support.
Thank you, Counsel Condon. Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, no, I wasn't able to attend finance, but I do, I am very supportive of this paper. I mean, it's great that we are able to redirect this money to a couple of great projects that I know have broad community support, and I did actually reach out to Counsel Taylor when I saw this put up, and know that she will provide great leadership to, to work and continue the effort to improve Roosevelt Field. I mean, I think this, you know, we, one, kind of the lemon out of the lemonade is that, you know, as a result of the effort on Roosevelt Field, we are investing the money to have a full-size soccer field at Maplewood Park, turf field, and then this is a grass field, we're improving things there. And that was one of the key objectives as we worked on all that thing, hearing from our soccer families of needing more facilities, that was our last open space plan. So this is furthering those things, and I think then it opens up more possibilities for community dialogue that will happen at Roosevelt. So very supportive of it, and I'm just glad that people were patient and it's, we're, in moving forward with these great projects, we will still be committed to making sure that Roosevelt, sort of the last park in our city that need, has not had a major investment, does get that major investment. So we'll remain committed to that. So thank you very much, I am very much in support of this.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just wanted to say, I spoke a lot on this in the Finance Committee, but for whoever's watching tonight, that this was also, we talked a little bit about having a CEIC, which is a Community Engagement and Inclusion Committee, and joint meeting with the public properties so that we could have some consensus-building communications about Roosevelt Park. It was a tough vote for me, but I trust I have spoken to the treasurer, I spoke to Dan, I spoke to the head of the CPC, to Rachel Running, and I'm glad that we're going to have our two parks that are being done, but I just definitely want to make sure that we move forward with discussions on Roosevelt Park for anyone listening. It's a big deal, and I know the ward counselor feels the same way, so we're just, I want to make sure that you know that we're going to be having meetings and discussing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cologne Hayes, Counsel Siminelli.
I'm all set, thank you.
Yes, and so, and just, just so I understand, this is specifically to sixty-nine twenty-five, correct? And then the first, we're talking about, are we, are we talking about all of the appropriations? Or we do want to take these up as a, as a bucket altogether? Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, I'm happy to explain them one at a time or in a group, as you prefer, and I don't have an opinion about when we vote.
So for, for the council, why don't we, why don't we have Counsel McDonald go through all of the projects?
Sure.
And then if there is consensus, we can take them up as a, as a group? And if, and if there's not consensus, we take them up individually? Counsel McDonald, I mean, Counsel Winslow, you have.
Don't we usually vote on financial papers as roll calls anyway? So I think we have to do with them individually, so, you know, whether we do them in order, but I think we actually have to vote individually. I don't know if that's typically the.
Then I'm happy to make a motion to adopt Order Sixty-eight twenty-five.
Well, so that's the committee report. Oh, wait, no.
No, that's the order.
You're right, you're right, you're right, sorry. On Counsel McDonald's motion to approve Sixty-eight twenty-five, seconded by Counsel Condon, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Sika.
Yes.
Counsel Siminelli.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes. That passes unanimously.
Paper sixty-nine dash twenty-five, order that the appropriation enumerated below, being in the amount of three hundred nineteen thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars, be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act Fund for the following project, Dever Park Revitalization, Phase Two, Open Space Reserve, ninety-four thousand dollars, Budget Reserve, two hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars. Total appropriation, three hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred nineteen thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars.
Counsel McDonald for the paper.
Yes, so we just spoke about Dever Park, and this is to, with this appropriation and the one that we just did, we're getting to the full funding of the park. So this included Phase Two, which I think related to the walkway around the park, do I have that correct? And so this is the Phase Two piece, and we just approved Phase Three. And I would just note that to my colleagues, Cologne Hayes and Counsel Condon, your name tags are switched.
Cool. Thank you, Counsel, thank you, Counsel McDonald. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
On Counsel McDonald, seconded by Counsel Siminelli, to approve this appropriation, the clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel Sika.
Yes.
Counsel Siminelli.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Winslow.
Yes.
Counsel President O'Malley.
Yes. That was approved unanimously. Counsel McDonald for seventy twenty-five.
Order that the appropriation enumerated below, being in the amount of eight thousand dollars, be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act Fund for the following project, Pearl Street Station Envelope Assessment Project, Historic Preservation Reserve, eight thousand dollars, total appropriation, eight thousand dollars.
Counsel McDonald.
So for this order and the next one, really, the, these are pretty straightforward. These are smaller, early-stage grants that the CPC is recommending to help potential future applicants have really good professional assessments and information that would guide their decision-making. And the CPC communicated that they had learned from past projects, when this wasn't clear, when you didn't have this kind of documentation, it wasn't always clear exactly what needed to be funded, or how much that was most likely to cost outside of the quotes that they had received, and it will, and they particularly wanted to make sure that the work that was being applied for was actually the most high priority for preserving the condition of the building. So we had two of these, there's actually one more that the committee is still considering, but they're all for the same type of purpose.
Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, so when you're referring to Pearl Street Station, is that a specific building? Is that the Pearl Street Restaurant building? Or is it, what, or is it?
It's the one on Pearl Street, right, it's the, yeah.
Oh, so it's Fire Station, okay. So Pearl Street Fire Station, okay, all right, thank you, great.
That is confusing.
Okay, all right, thank you, Pearl Street Fire Station, all right, thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve Order Seventy.
All right, thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve Order 7025.
Yeah, that is confusing. That is confusing.
We don't own Pearl Street Station, though.
No, I know, but they can apply for these. So I wonder, uh, if this should say, uh, Pearl Street.
Can we modify that to include the address?
Or just Fire Station? I mean, it, because Pearl Street Station is a thing.
Yeah.
And if I, and when I read that, I thought Pearl Street Station, the restaurant. Even though I was in that meeting where I knew it wasn't that. So that's how confusing it is.
So, do you have a second?
Is it?
Just like this, Pearl Street Fire Station.
Oh, my God, just.
Is that okay? Unanimous consent, Fire Station?
Yes, Fire Station.
Sure.
Great. Okey-dokey. So on Counselor McDonald's, uh, motion to approve this, seconded by Counselor Winslow, all those in favor, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley.
Yes.
Okay. The order has been adopted.
That passes unanimously.
Paper 71-25, order that the appropriation enumerated below, being in the amount of $8,000, be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act for the following project, Oliver Street Station Envelope Assessment Project, Historic Preservation Reserve, $8,000, total appropriation, $8,000.
Is this also a Fire Station?
Yes.
Yeah, can we make that too? This, that's helpful. Uh, Counselor McDonald.
Uh, yes, so it's the same deal. So both of these are city-owned buildings, and I would just recommend that we include the address. So the address of the Oliver Street former Fire Station is 134 Oliver Street, and the address of the Pearl Street former Fire Station is 176 Pearl Street.
I think that, I think we're all in unanimous consent, that's a good idea. Okey-dokey.
So so moved.
So to approve it.
To approve Order 7125.
Any questions? Seconded by Counselor Condon, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley.
Yes.
Order is adopted, ten to zero.
The order is adopted unanimously.
Paper 72-25, order that the appropriation enumerated below, being in the amount of $349,166.52, be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act Fund for the following project, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Community Housing Reserve, and total appropriation, both in the total of $349,166.52.
Counselor McDonald.
So this is the second year that the CPC has, uh, is entering into a partnership with our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Uh, under the state CPC law, there's a certain percentage of, uh, the income for the CPC that has to be spent in each of its core three priority areas. So that's open space, historic preservation, and community housing. So they, that, that's part of why you see in these orders, you see like this, something that'll say like Open Space Reserve. They just segregate those things off into separate accounts so that they can keep track of that requirement and make sure they're spending to those minimums. If they don't, then it will carry over to the next year. So rather than waiting for individual housing projects, which often move at a timeframe that is not compatible or ideal for the CPC's annual process, um, this, our CPC, like many CPCs, has a partnership with our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, where they make that as a donation, or a transfer, or grant, I guess a grant, to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and they can then spend that, uh, as part of their programs. They are much better situated to work with potential developers and owners on these projects, and the complexity of putting all the different funding sources together, having that kind of early city locally-funded, um, uh, grants, even if they're not the largest part of the funding for a project, does, does a lot to demonstrate community support and catalyze other sources of funding. Uh, so this has been a successful partnership. The two groups have been working hard to build a relationship and rapport, and, uh, we are very excited to see this continuing for our second year.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. On Counselor McDonald's motion to approve, is there a second? Oh, ca- seconded by Counselor Winslow, and Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate the CPC, uh, making this commitment again. It, it is very much, uh, you know, the cost of housing is much more than this, the, the money, the modest amount of money, this is a good chunk of money, but, you know, the cost of housing is in, in the tens of millions of dollars on those ma- major projects. So if, this is helpful in making sure that we can contribute to those projects, but often the schedules are dictated by the people who are providing the bigger chunk of money. So I think it, it, and it's also the Affordable Housing Trust has finance experts and experts who've, who've built, like Angie Liu from ACDC, who have actually built affordable housing, um, in major ways. So I think it's, it's a good way, and, and many other communities are doing this, so I'm supportive of it. Thank you. And I second the motion. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, uh, on the motion to approve, uh, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley.
Yes.
Order is adopted.
The order is adopted unanimously.
Paper 73-25, order that the appropriation enumerated below, being in the amount of $475,000, be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act Fund for the following project, Forestale Cemetery Wall Restoration Project, Historic Preservation Reserve, $278,000, budgeted reserve, $197,000, total appropriation, $475,000.
Thank you very much, Counselor McDonald.
So this is a project to shore up the wall that goes around Forestale Cemetery. And this appropriation actually might be a little low to cover the whole pro- cost of that project, but we were joined by our cemetery supervisor and, uh, favorite tree warden, Chris Rosa, for this conversation, and we're, um, assured that, you know, there's, with this, with this grant, we're gonna find a way to, to really make this project happen. It is, as I understand, important that the whole wall be done at the same time so that it has a uniform look, especially with the grout. And so that's what we're hopeful can happen. A fun fact that I learned in this committee discussion is that this is actually a wall built, uh, by the Workers Progress Administration, the FDR-era, um, Depression-era, you know, Public Works Project. Um, and so I think that's a pretty cool piece of history here in Malden, and dovetails nicely with the fact that our cemetery has recently been designated a Level One Arboretum. There are, in fact, three levels of arboretum? Four? Four, there are four levels of arboretum, so we're really just getting in the game. And I think that a Level One Arboretum deserves a wall that is not falling apart. And certainly, if we're feeling our Two game, um, we're gonna want that wall. So we were happy to support this project.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Is there, uh, Counselor McDonald's motion to adopt, seconded by Counselor Taylor, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley.
Yes.
That was adopted nine to zero. Paper 75-25, order that the appropriation enumerated below, being in the amount of $40,000, be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act Fund for the following project, Housing Subsidy for Older Adults Project, budgeted reserve and total appropriation, both in the amount of $40,000.
Counselor McDonald.
So I really loved this proposal from housing families for a pilot project that is supposed to help bridge the gap between the list of permanent senior housing and the folks on that list. And so this project is going to, uh, select, I think, three or four families, I think four, three families? I think, anyways, a, a small number of folks, um, with some qualifications, uh, about who, about who would qualify, to see if this can help them bridge the gap by paying a portion of their rent while they're waiting for a unit to become available. Uh, so it seems like a great short-term way to help make sure that our seniors do have housing, and that we're trying to buy us, buy ourselves time and space to catch up on that, on that long waitlist. Um, so I was just really excited to see this come through and, and look forward to learning how that pilot project goes.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. On Counselor McDonald's motion to adopt the order, seconded by Counselor, uh, Crowe, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley.
Uh, yes. That is adopted unanimously.
Thank you all for your support of these CPC projects.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coff, for your, for your service and for helping guide us along the way. Uh, next order of business.
Paper 115-25, committee report, the Standing Committee on Personnel and Appointments, to whom was referred Papers 421 and 445, series of 2024, and Paper 3, series of 2025, having considered the same. Make the following report. Committee recommends these papers out favorably to the full council.
Motion to receive.
On Counselor, uh, Linehan's motion to receive the committee report, seconded by Counselor C- Cologne Hayes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the committee report is received. The clerk will read the first paper.
421-24, mayoral appointment, Madeline McCormick, night, 190 Pleasant Street, apartment 238, Malden, as a member of the Human Rights and Fair Housing Commission, said term to commence upon confirmation by the city council and to expire November 13th, 2027.
Counselor Linehan for the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so we had a great meeting of the Personnel and Appointments Committee last week. We met actually all three of these candidates, two for the Human Rights and Fair Housing Commission and one for the Disability Commission. They came in together, um, and we interviewed them kind of back-to-back. Um, Madeline is a resident of our downtown here. She's a social justice attorney who, um, told us that she has a passion for serving marginalized communities and is very eager to get involved in Malden. So we were excited to have a good conversation with her and unanimously, unanimously recommended her favorably for appointment to the full council.
Are there any discussion, any, any motions? On Counselor Linehan, on Counselor Linehan's motion to confirm the appointment, seconded by Counselor Condon, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley.
Yes.
Confirmed by ten to zero vote. Paper 445-24, mayoral appointment, Catherine Doyle, 45 Weber Street, Unit 1, Malden, as a member of the Disability Commission, said term to commence upon confirmation by the city council and expire March 15th, 2027.
Counselor Linehan.
Thank you. Um, so this would be filling the term of Tova Miller, who recently resigned from the commission. Um, we had a great conversation with Catherine Doyle. Um, she has a disability support background and actually is already hitting the ground running, serving on the commission, attending the meetings, um, and getting great feedback on the input that she's giving. So we were excited to chat with her and also voted unanimously to recommend her favorably for appointment.
On Counselor Linehan's motion to confirm the appointment, seconded by Counselor Condon, uh, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley.
Yes.
Appointment is confirmed, ten to zero. Paper 3-25, mayoral appointment, Cindy Cohen, 1275 Salem Street, Malden, as a member of the Human Rights and Fair Housing Commission, said term to commence upon confirmation by the city council and to expire December 17th, 2027.
Counselor Linehan.
Thank you. Um, so Cindy was the last person that we interviewed last week. She brings an accounting and banking background to the role. Um, she actually volunteers with Mystic Valley Elder Services, which was pretty cool, and